I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight to the May eighth city council meeting. With that, I'll call to order the May eighth twenty twenty-three city council order. The council meeting, can you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion made second discussion. With the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda. Item four point oh presentations. Item A, twenty twenty-three thirty-four, the conduit bond for Nexus Diversified Community Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the May first twenty twenty-three work meeting, city council received a presentation from City's Bond Council, Dorsey Whitney, and financial advisor Ellers regarding a request for the city's participation in conduit bond financing for the proposed purchase of the Camby Hills facility by Nexus Family Healing. The presentation by Dorsey Whitney and Ellers reviewed the process and procedures for the issuance of the conduit bonds. Both explained the legal considerations and assured that the city would have no liability exposure if we should decide to be the host city for this issuance. ISD fifteen school superintendent Carsten Anderson spoke and supported the need for the service to be provided by Nexus, but had concerns regarding charges for rent, state reimbursement of ISD's fifteen costs for out-of-district students, and staffing for district-provided services. City council members questioned if there would be additional costs borne by the school district to support these services and urged Nexus to work with ISD fifteen to remedy these matters. Nexus and ISD are scheduling meetings for this week to discuss these items. City had a meeting with the Nexus officials on Friday, and we discussed some of these points, and I think their first meeting with the school district is on Thursday of this week. After discussion of the proposed participation of the city in this matter, city council directed staff to schedule the consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-three, Resolution relating to financing under Minnesota State Statute, section four sixty-nine, one fifty-two, through four sixty-nine point one sixty-five, as amended on behalf of Nexus Diversified Community Services, calling for a public hearing on the agenda for tonight's meeting. This resolution authorizes the preparation and publication of a public hearing notice, schedules a public hearing for June twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and engages Dorsey Whitney as their bond counsel. The resolution does not authorize the financing or bond issuance for the project. The vote for final approval will come after the public hearing on June twelfth. Issues with ISD fifteen and Nexus will attempt to be remedied during the interval between the two meetings. The fee a city can charge for the borrow for conduit bond assistance and expenses is negotiable and will be discussed as once all the costs for this project are known. Staff recommends that city council consider approval of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four, Resolution relating to a financing under Minnesota Statute, section four sixty-nine, one fifty-two, through four sixty-nine, one sixty-five, as amended on behalf of Nexus Diversified Community Services, calling for a public hearing as exhibited in attachment one.
Well, just to kick it off, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four, Resolution relating to a financing under Min Statute, section four sixty-nine, dot one fifty-two through four sixty-nine, dot one sixty-five. I'll second.
Motion made second discussion. With the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion passes.
Before we leave, I just want to point out that Michelle Murray, the president and CEO of Nexus, are here in the audience, along with Scott McGuire, their chief financial officer. So, anybody has any questions for them, they're here and available.
Well, is it in good order for me to ask Jim why he voted no?
I just think there's a lot of questions that are unanswered, and until we have the answers, I don't agree with it.
Even with having a public hearing on the matter?
Yep.
Okay.
Any questions for Scott, or anybody have any questions for them, while they're here?
Has any of the numbers come in yet for anything relating to the taxpayers' impact on schools or anything yet?
We had a meeting Friday with Nexus, and I talked to the school district. Their business manager was out last week on military leave. They did say that Nexus had reached out to them, and they do have meetings scheduled with the school district beginning this Thursday to discuss those matters that were brought up in their last meeting.
I agree. I mean, I was at the meeting on Friday, and I agree that there are outstanding questions. There's no question about that. And it relates to, very specifically, where our minds are at ease that if we were to go forward with the conduit bonding, it would not obligate the taxpayers of this city to pay those bonds. That's on the people who borrow the money. They're just using our ability to issue tax-exempt bonds. But what we don't want is the impact of on taxpayers of having an increase in the school levy that's related to their unanticipated costs or something with the services they provide to the Nexus facility if it goes forward. So, that's what our concern is. But I'm just in the camp that I think we can at least have a public hearing and give people an opportunity to discuss it, and hopefully by then have some more information too.
I might add too that I spoke with Dorsey Whitney today, and they would like to appear before our May twenty-second council meeting to do a presentation to give us an update and hopefully provide some of those answers at that time.
In anticipation of that, would you be kind enough to send copies of the agreement between the city of East Bethel and Dorsey Whitney to the city council members so they can review it before that meeting?
Sure will.
Appreciate it. So, and to be clear with this, what we approve tonight is only approval for to conduct a public hearing. It's not an approval. We are not committed to approving it. It's just the next step to go down the road.
That's correct. This resolution only authorized the calling for the public hearing.
Yes.
And nothing else.
Any other comments, questions? Moving on then, Jack. Item B, A blast conditional use permit, two one four seven three Johnson Street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Classic Construction Incorporated, on behalf of Our Family Holding LLC, has submitted an application for the expansion to A Blast Incorporated, located at two one four seven three Johnson Street Northeast. Our Family Holdings LLC owns Coriosity Coatings, a powder coating business currently operating in Elk River. The proposal consists of relocating the powder coating operation to the East Bethel site and constructing an eighty-by-fifty-eight warehouse and storage addition to their existing building. The proposed addition would house interior storage and be the staging area for products either waiting to be powder coated and are waiting for pickup. This property is Zoned B three highway commercial business, which allows uses associated with general retail shopping. A Blast Incorporated was and is permitted to operate by conditional use permit, two thousand four dash fifteen, approved on November seventeenth of two thousand four. As a part of this conditional use, exterior storage was limited to essential business-related material as a condition. An amendment to the original CUP is required for the following reasons. The business is legal nonconforming. It means that the business is legal because it has a conditional use permit that was previously approved. However, current city code does not allow for this type of business in the B three highway commercial business district. Therefore, it is nonconforming. City council has the authority to determine if a legal nonconforming use can be expanded. When a conditional use intends on expanding its hours of operation, number of employees, expansion of structure and/or premises, or the operational modifications resulting in increased activities or traffic, an amendment to the original CUP is required. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on April twenty-fifth and recommends the city council approve the conditional use permit amendment with the conditions set forth in Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, which is included in your packet. And there is a next step, and we'll move on to that after we determine approval.
Make a motion to approve the CUP A with the conditions set forth in attached Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made second discussion. With the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Item C, A blast site plan review, two one four seven three Johnson Street.
All right, a site plan review is required prior to issuance of a building permit for new construction or additions to commercial buildings greater than twenty-five percent of their existing building footprint, as cited in Appendix A, section four twelve, site plan approval. The existing building footprint for A Blast is five thousand square feet, and the proposed addition is approximately forty-seven hundred square feet. So, Classic Construction, again, on behalf of Our Family Holdings LLC, has submitted an application for site plan review as required by the expansion for A Blast Incorporated. I could give you all the same details about where it's located, and it's in a business zone, all of those things. We just heard those things. I can assure you that city staff has looked through the site plan that was submitted. It has been sent to the city engineer for his comment, and all conditions, as required by the city engineer, will be met before permits are issued. And at the April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed the site plan and recommends approval to the city council with conditions set forth in Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight and the accompanying exhibits for site plan approval.
Your motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, approval of the site plan for A Blast.
Second.
Motion made second discussion.
Question, is there going to be any problems with this business if it ever solves because it's nonconforming?
Mayor, council members, any problems? Let me narrow that down if I can. I suspect what you're dealing with, are there going to be any problems given its nonconformity in one location as zoned and then the permitted in the B three? It's legal then, it would be legal to new owners. Obviously, with that, there would be, you know, issues, again, just like here, if there was going to be an expansion and so forth, having to navigate that, given that you have this type of situation.
If I can add, Mr. Larson, an existing nonconforming or a conditional use would be permitted. However, its underlying zoning could still be also used. So, it could be any one of our permitted uses in the B three highway commercial should A Blast not continue operation. So, any of our approved items, approved uses in any of our businesses, business zones, B two, B three, light industrial may be an option for this area as well. The conditional use does stay with the land, however. So, if A Blast were to relocate or move somewhere else, that parcel of property does have the right to be under this conditional use, whatever the operation was. So, there's a pretty wide variety of things that could actually happen should A Blast leave our city.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? I just want to thank A Blast for bringing the rest of your business down from Elk River. Thank you very much for coming to East Bethel. And with that, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Like I said, thanks again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Five point oh, public forum, Suzanne Urkel.
Hi, everybody. I'm Suzanne Urkel. I live on Okinawa Street. I'm volunteering for the East Bethel seniors, and they're doing a fundraiser sale of tickets for, to be drawn on booster days, and I'm the point of contact. It's for a beautiful quilt, or second place is a diamond art print. And I just want to pass out flyers to council people so you can take it. Pass those out. And I want everybody to know that I've got tickets available if anybody would like them. I've been hitting up everybody, or if you know of a business that's willing to post a flyer, I'd appreciate a phone call on that too. So, thank you. Nice to see everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Public forum? Moving on, six point oh, consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made, is there a second? I'll second. I'd also like to pull item B as in boy.
I'd like to pull A.
Me too.
A?
A.
I want to pull D.
D as in dog?
D as in dog.
The remaining C and E. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, C and E pass. Item A.
I got a question on this month's bill for Metro Innet. There are, what, one, two, three, four? What are they all for, Mike?
It's all for our internet service. They provide everything that we do. Their total bill for the year is about fifty-five, sixty thousand dollars. We were in the JPA with thirty different cities. This group, the JPA broke up, so this group took over those services. As a result too, we also have one of their staff members that houses here two days a week. That's their big IT person, so we have access to that service. But it's all for our internet service.
Why is there such a variance in the billing? Finance is seven hundred, fire department is eighteen hundred, there's a couple more five hundred in there.
It's broken down by the number of computers in each department.
Okay. Well, when I make a motion to approve item A.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Item B is just a typo. Instead of city council work meeting, it should be city council meeting. And with that, I'll approve item B with the correction made.
I also had a question on item B.
Okay.
On the minutes, it says, it's for the April twenty-fourth city council meeting, and on page thirteen of fourteen, which is also page fifty-six of the packet, my point wasn't regarding, and I mentioned when Carla was here, there were two kinds, two things. One was typos, and the other was where you're missing the point when you're doing the transcription. My point that I made at that time wasn't that, wasn't regarding meeting of Jack Davis and Mayor Harrington. It was regarding us needing to be informed when either or both of you have meetings with people outside on city-related business. We just need to be updated as to interaction with outside parties on city-related business when you're representing the city. So, what it said was, my concern was between you talking with Tim, and that wasn't the point at all. So, just wanted to point that out, and I'd like to see it corrected for the record, since it is the record. Does that make sense, what I just said?
Yeah.
Made sense to me, but I figured I'd ask if it made sense to anybody else. Other than that.
I got something on that too. When Carla was here, I asked her about, she said that she could put numbers on all the comments and everything. Said it would be a lot easier for us to decipher when things are different, and that didn't happen, so is that going to happen?
That'll be on the next set of minutes.
Okay, good enough.
You want to say it, or you want me to say it?
Go for it.
With that, I move that we approve item D.
Motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes.
Oh, it was item B, not item D, excuse me.
B as in boy.
Yeah.
Then item D as in dog, Jim.
Aaron, can you pull up the Planning Commission video on the screens for the twenty-fifth?
Oops, not the part, sorry.
Okay, can you scroll through to where the interviews start? I've had a lot of people call me, and it was such a mess that they couldn't even watch the video.
You mean the broadcast?
Anything, yeah. They were just, so they asked me to bring it up, and I will. So, we want to watch the interviews so everybody could see them. And I just want to make sure that the volume's up, Jack, so everybody can hear it.
As soon as I find the spot, I'll turn the volume on here. I just want to make sure we get to the right. You want me to go directly to the first interview?
Yes, and then play it out from there.
I think we're close here. I've got these maxed out, Jack.
You know, you use your hands a bit too.
All the time, yes.
That relates to a meeting on Friday where he observed that I used my hands when I speak.
Thank you. If you want to sequester the second candidate, will you find him a comfortable conference room?
Please.
And come get him in a comfortable conference room?
Well, thank you for having me here again. My motivation for seeking a seat on the Planning Commission is to represent the interests of local community and work towards sustainable development that preserves the unique qualities of East Bethel. I believe that prioritizing the needs of existing residents and homeowners, we can enhance the quality of life in our community and foster environment for small business and home-based enterprise thrive. One of the biggest challenges facing East Bethel right now is finding ways to attract business or development that our communities need, such as a small grocery store, family restaurants, or even boutique retail. We also need to find ways to address the high sewer and water fees associated with the water treatment facility, which has been a major roadblock on business development.
Could you repeat that, please? I didn't get what you said in the last sentence.
I said, we also need to find ways to address the high sewer and water fees associated with the water treatment facility, which has been a major constraint on business development. As a Planning Commission member, I would work towards exploring creative solutions to attract business and promote sustainable development in the area while maintaining the rural character and culture of East Bethel. I believe that transparency and fairness are critical to the success of the Planning Commission, and I would prioritize these values in my work on the commission. I would also work collaboratively with fellow commissioners and the city council to ensure that all voices are heard and that the needs of the community are being met. I'd like to clarify what I mean about when I say sustainable development. To me, sustainable development means a responsible approach to growth and development that meets the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. It involves balancing economic, social, environmental considerations and decision-making with the goal of promoting long-term well-being and resilience. This includes prioritizing local, small-scale businesses, home-based enterprises, protecting natural resources, and preserving the rural character and culture of East Bethel.
What strengths and abilities would you bring to the Planning Commission?
Thank you for the question. I believe my experience and skills make me a strong candidate for the Planning Commission. As a longtime resident of the area, I have deep understanding of the community's needs, values, and priorities. Additionally, my background in business and project management have given me the skills to effectively manage difficult tasks, research complex information, and work collaboratively with diverse groups of people. One of my strengths is my ability to listen and incorporate feedback from others. I believe that this is important to consider a variety of perspectives when making decisions that impact the community, and I am committed to ensuring that all voices are heard. Additionally, I have experience in data analysis and research, which I believe will be useful in making informed decisions and supporting evidence-based policies. I also have a strong commitment to sustainability, environmentally responsible development. I believe that we have a responsibility to preserve and enhance the natural resources that make our community unique, and I'm eager to work towards sustainable development that balances the needs of our community with the help of our local environment. Finally, I have a track record of leadership and community involvement, including volunteering with local organizations. I believe that my experience in these roles has given me the skills and perspective needed to effectively serve on the Planning Commission and work towards the betterment of our community.
As a Planning Commission member, what do you believe your role is as representative of the city?
My role is to take feedback from the community and try to, and follow through with the vision that the residents want. The hardest part of the balance is, how do we balance development and pressure from developers to come in and gobble up all land as fast as possible with the wants of the community? Prioritizing grocery stores' development, that's a big need for our community, or even small retail shops, or strip mall, things that would all improve business climate in our community. Recently, the city council was talking about a variance for a small business that's operating out of the home. He's been looking for a position, a commercial spot in our community, he can't find any. And when you look around at East Bethel, there's nothing available. We have no open commercial space. All the land's locked up by landholders, and it's not being developed. As a Planning Commission, we need to find ways to free up some of the space to allow small businesses to grow and thrive. We should act as a business incubator. We have people working from home, we have people working from their workshops. Find ways to improve their position and get them to commercial spaces so that they can pay commercial rates.
I think I got this question last time. It's my favorite. What is your vision for the Highway sixty-five corridor?
Well, as a Planning Commission member, my vision for the Highway sixty-five development corridor is promote sustainable development that meets the needs of our community and preserves the unique character and culture of East Bethel. I believe that the current zoning regulations, which open up the land within one mile east and west of Highway sixty-five, to nearly unregulated development, are excessive and do not reflect the needs or wants of the residents. Instead, I'd propose a more measured approach to development that focuses on enhancing the quality of the life of our community while also promoting economic growth. This includes exploring ways to attract small business that align with the needs of the community, such as restaurants, family restaurants, boutique retail, and other services that cater to residents. I think everybody wants a bait shop. Or a sports store. I would also prioritize working with developers to ensure that any new development aligns with our community's vision and does not negatively impact existing neighborhoods, rural areas, or natural habitats. This includes being mindful of the potential for sewer creep beyond the water district and implementing appropriate zoning regulations that encourage responsible and focused development. Ultimately, my vision for the Highway sixty-five development corridor is promote sustainable development that enhances the quality of life for our residents, supports local businesses. supports local businesses, and preserves the unique character and culture of East Bethel.
Ryan, do you want to do question five, please? Do you hold any roles that could place you in a position with a conflict of interest as a Planning Commission member? Examples, financial, family relationships, or groups engaged in community matters?
As of right now, there are no local issues that would place me in a conflict of interest situation. However, I strongly believe in transparency and accountability in the public sector. Therefore, I will make it a priority to be aware of potential conflicts of interest that may arise and promptly disclose them to the appropriate parties. As a Planning Commission member, I understand the importance of maintaining impartiality and working in the best interests of the residents of East Bethel. I'll strive to maintain a high level of ethical conduct and ensure that any decisions are made, any decisions made are fair and objective. If any issues do arise, I'm committed to handling them with transparency and integrity and recusing myself from those.
Can I just add a follow-up to that question, please?
Sure, as long as you do it to the next one, yeah.
Sure?
Yep, yep.
I am curious as to a position that you currently hold, which to me might be a conflict of interest. And I'm wondering whether or not you'd be willing to give that up in order to be a member of the Planning Commission?
I'm not quite sure what you speak of, but if you're talking about employment at Polaris?
No, I'll be very clear then. You are currently the moderator of a social media website for the city, and I kind of consider that to be a conflict of interest. Because as a moderator, you can control the narrative of what is being talked about in the city. So, my question to you is, do you, do you consider that to be a conflict of interest?
Yes, I do, and last month I did step down that position. I spoke with the other moderators, and I said that this was potentially causing too much interference, and I did step down, so I'm no longer a moderator of East Bethel, what's up?
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to fill it out, please.
Yep. That's a good question, thank you for that.
So before we end, are there any, any questions you have for us, or anything you would like to add?
I do. As a candidate for the Planning Commission, I, I'm interested in knowing how the commission plans to address ongoing animosity between both the commission and the city council. I heard some ideas today about a work meeting, and I think that'd probably be, you know, a, a good idea to actually have heart-to-hearts rather than speaking in official terms, maybe being misinterpreted, you know, having interpersonal relationships, or even actively reaching out with, um, reaching out to the people that maybe there's, you know, conflicting ideas with. What, what my question is, um, as commission members, what steps do you as a group plan to take to improve communication and collaboration between the two bodies? And how do you propose to move forward in a way that benefits our community as a whole?
To answer your question, yes, that, as you've heard, we have talked about having those types of meetings. We've had them in the past, again, they don't always get agreed upon. We've, like I said, had good meetings in the past, we've had ones that, that weren't as well, where, that wasn't there. I guess for me, and again, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the body, as far as the communication back and forth, whether it's during a meeting or outside of a meeting, that's a two-way street. I think we've been very clear, we've been very respectable of everyone's opinion on it. And in opportunities when we've had to voice our opinions, whether it be, at least for me specifically, during a public hearing or an open forum at city council, when I had something to say, I used the right avenue to do that in without, you know, grabbing them out right outside the door, or waiting for them, or anything like that. So, use the appropriate channels, but again, when there's opportunities as well during things like council report, as a council liaison is meant for, as part of that communication, they're, they're here to help, from my impression, they're here to help relay what happens in these meetings to their meeting. And in the last few years, again, my personal opinion has been that what we've discussed or what the feelings were when going back and looking at the meetings was not reiterated back to the city council, or at least in the manner that we did, or it was brushed over, especially when we had things with great importance. So, again, I, I'm going to throw that back and say that that is a two-way street. And again, that, you know, obviously, it's welcome to have any conversation, but again, that, I don't think we've ever closed that door to have that discussion. And in recent meetings, we have had lack of, you know, our liaison wasn't available when the council update was here.
I would say also, I'm just, um, I don't know, surprised with a question that is asking us how we're going to improve communication. It was, do you have it written down? Do you want, maybe want to restate it? That's, but that's my impression, is you're asking us how we're going to improve communication, is that correct?
Yeah, I, you know, I've, I've been watching all the statements being made, and I, I feel like there's a lot of real sorrow attitudes on both sides. And I don't feel like it's reparable unless people are committed to repairing it. And, and holding out and fighting is not serving the best interests of our community. You know, I, I recognize that some of the new people on the city council might not have the same visions of people on this group, but ultimately, I know that they want the best for the residents of East Bethel, just as all of you. How they want to get there might not be the exact same, but, you know, the goal is serving people in East Bethel. And so ultimately, you know, the standoffish attitudes, and it's on both sides, I'm not going to say it's on one, and I hope nobody's shocked by that. I think that, I think we all need to, you know, figure out a way to just kind of drop it.
Mr. Rider, do you think that you're part of that communication problem, though, also?
I feel like there has been a lot of fractionalization in our city.
There's been a fractionalization?
Fractionalization of attitudes, so yes, I, I am part of that.
Right, I, I'm glad you acknowledged that, because there are some things that you've said in, in social media. One I can think of in particular is where you said that, that Mr. Terry came and demanded a new liaison. He did not demand anything, I don't think Mr. Terry has ever demanded anything of this like. But that's what you posted on social media. Okay, so, do you think that's appropriate?
I'm well-considered in my statements, and I watch these meetings over and over again. Every meeting you have, every minute, and I watch the videos multiple times. My feeling was, he came off and he was saying, "This is not going to happen, this is unprecedented." And, and the, the words that were said, saying, they were just words that shouldn't be said in a professional setting, they are, they, they're too toxic, and, and they're not, they're not seeking to find common ground. And I'm saying this, it's, we need to work for the best interests of our community, put personal politics aside. The election was very passionate, a lot of people got very passionate, but the differentiation that people had to take, it's done. Now we need to come together and focus on, on the future, and that's, that's where we need to be. You know, and we can say, "Well, nobody's called Jim Smith a liar," but it was implied, and it's right in those minutes, it was implied, we can't do that to each other. You guys don't like being called out like that, then we shouldn't be calling anyone out. People are here to serve the community, they're different, but they have good intentions. And I think we need to focus on that, and we need to get bypasses. I admit, I haven't always been on the up and up with my communication, but I'm not the only one, I'm not.
I think that doesn't matter, though, what matters is what you say, and what I say, and what these individuals say also. So, you know, I'll say right now, I have a same worldview as Mr. Lewis, as Mr. Miller, as probably Mr. Smith, I don't know his politics. I don't know Mr. Lewis's in particular either, but we have very similar worldviews, maybe some other people here don't.
Well, let me express my worldview. I live in a rural residential area, and there was a development that was supposed to have thirty houses on it, and it got turned into two-hundred-and-thirty rental units in about two months of time. There's a lot of residents who are upset with that, and that should have slowed down. This is why I want to be on this commission, to try and slow things down when, when they're moving too fast. There's a lot of people that are really upset about that townhome development. Yes, we need it for, for our water, but it might not have been the, the best approach. You know, we lost a road commission because they were trying to slow it down on, on road surveys.
Do you think that the property owners have rights to, to build what they, what is, what is within the confines of, of what's allowed?
To build a, to build a development that is so out of place in our community, there's nothing like that, nothing. That's going to be a completely different type of zone than anything we have.
But I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to stop there for a second, and, and this is something we've come across, again, over, over a number of years, and this is where I go back to letting, letting procedures and processes happen, because we do have to allow what's legal to go on. And as you pointed out, you know, a, a landowner, property owner, having the ability to do what is within their rights to do, we do have to allow that. I'm not going to bring up every example over the last decade-plus, but again, there are those things. So, if, if a landowner sells to a developer, and that area is zoned something specific, and it fits the guidelines, unfortunately, it's not what everyone always wants, and sometimes it is also still at the best interest of the city, and we have to allow for some flexibility to allow for developers, because if you pigeonhole them into something so small and so specific, you might not ever get that. And that's what actually pushes developers out based on, you know, past, my past history, from what I've seen. So, I'm just going to caution everybody to please remember that. Sometimes it's not always what we want on our personal beliefs, but what we need to allow based on what is currently in the codes. And yes, if things need to change, to change, but we can't change what's already happening. And we've, and we've been sued for that before and gone through that process. And if we didn't allow businesses and landowners to follow through with that process, which includes applying, going through meetings here, and sometimes meetings at great lengths, it's not that we always want to be going through that, but we have to, we have to allow that, just like today. And, and again, to, again, me even earlier allowing, or asking, you know, letting Glenn speak his mind briefly on this topic, but I, how I also preach that we need to keep this process moving forward. Whether, you know, whether we all like, like it, how it's going or not, we still need to keep moving forward, because this is what we have before us. And this is why, again, we are an advisory committee. It's not lost on anybody here, that again, we work at the behest of city council and for our city at large. No one here, I don't think, has a personal agenda about wanting something specific somewhere, anywhere. And again, I'll apologize if I'm speaking for my, my council members out, out of order here, but again, I think, given my history here, everyone has the intent of just trying to do what's, what's best and what's right and what's legal. So please keep that in mind, too. This is not always what we just want.
I don't mean to imply that you guys have conflicts of interest.
But we do need to keep moving this forward, too.
Okay, well, in conclusion, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for their time and opportunity to share my vision for East Bethel. I believe that my experience and commitment to sustainable development and local community involvement will be a valuable asset to the commission. I'm excited about the potential to work collaboratively with other members of the commission and the city council to address the challenges facing our community, including balancing the needs of property owners with those of the broader community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron, do you grab?
Jack, did they get this recording fixed?
Yes.
So everybody's seen it?
Welcome, Mr. Hall.
Do we want to ask Mr. Rider to step out?
I run the meeting, Jim, not you.
I don't, I don't, pardon me for stepping in.
Please.
I don't think it's necessary, because he's already heard the questions.
Yep, I believe that was the purpose.
But I, if, if the, the committee wants to, or the commission wants to have him moved out, then that's fine.
And don't bother me.
I was just trying to remember from our last meeting, it's been a few months now, so I couldn't remember if we sequestered.
I think traditionally we have.
Okay.
I mean, I remember when I went through the process, we did.
Now we can grill Eldon.
Turn the lights, turn the lights up.
Look out, Eldon.
I'm only trying to remember.
Eldon, we're just going to go through a series of six questions, I'll start here, we'll just go around the horn and answer. So again, thank you for putting, putting in the time tonight. Why are you interested in becoming a commission member for East Bethel?
Fairly simple, fairly simple. I was on the commission for quite a few years, I miss it. I quit the commission to help some underprivileged children to have a better life, which I thought was more important than what I was doing, but I do miss it. You know, I, uh, know most of you except for Gabriel pretty well. You know me, you know what I'm going to be like. I'd just like to be on it, and I believe I know what I'm doing, and that's why.
Thank you.
What strengths and abilities would you bring to the Planning Commission?
Well, my first strength and main strength is do what's right for the people of East Bethel. That, that's the main goal, no matter what happens here, whether I'm on the commission or not, whatever's right for the people. My strength is, I've been chair, I've been on the commission quite a few years. I know, like I get, I say, I know everything except Gabriel, and, um, I feel I know what I'm doing.
As, as a Planning Commission member, what do you believe your role is as representative of the city?
Do what's right for the people, period. There's eleven, over eleven thousand of them, so there's a lot of work.
Yep. Gabriel?
What's your vision for the Highway sixty-five corridor?
Oh, boy. Well, I was on the Planning Commission when we first started this, so, and it's changed a lot. And obviously, what's happened has changed thoughts and everything else, but I think we're down, going down the right road. And hopefully, we can get people to, uh, to come to East Bethel.
Thank you.
Do you hold any roles that could place you in a position of conflict of interest as a Planning Commission member, i.e. financial, family relationships, or groups engaged in community matters?
I have no, no, I mean, I get along with pretty much everybody, most of the time, not all the time, but, um, no.
As a follow-up, are you part of any social media pages or anything that would have a direct interest?
I was getting there.
Oh, I'm taking you into trouble.
I was getting there.
We can go with that before we ask. I got your support.
Okay, I'll tell you one thing, I'm on Facebook, and if you go on my site, you'll see what I'm up against. I mean, you'll see what I'm about. I don't want any conflict, um, most of my stuff is funny stuff, I'm trying to be joking. Well, I used to be a clown, so, I used to be an aqua jester, so. But, um, no, I, there's too much of the garbage on Facebook, it's... I don't know how people can put up with all that garbage on there, it's pathetic, it really is.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us, or anything else you would like to add?
Well, the only thing I'd like to add is, I know, like I say, I know most of you. Been on the board and commission with everybody here, except for Gabriel, and you know what I'm like. You know that I try and do what's right for the people, you know that we've had our differences, but we still work together, and that's the main thing. but we still work together and that's the main thing for the city.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Eldon.
Thank you.
Thanks for playing that. There was a lot of people, like I said, I had calls that nobody really knew what was going on there. And, uh, I hope that, uh, everybody can figure out the right decision that I have in my mind. But by watching the two interviews, I, uh, I will make a motion to deny Eldon Holmes as the planning commissioner.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second it with your thanks for your previous service to the city.
Motion made second discussion.
I want to say it's nothing against you, Eldon. I know you've given a lot of years to the city and I thank you for that. I just believe that, uh, in my vision, Joe has different outlooks like we do and that's why I made my decision.
To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes.
I'll make another motion to put Joe Ryder on the planning commission effective immediately.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made second discussion.
Yeah, so why Mr. Ryder?
He's an extraordinarily sharp young man, one of the sharpest young people I've met. Uh, he's a naval veteran, disabled Navy vet. And, um, he just impresses me a lot in his research skills. He was an analyst in the Navy. He did intelligence work. And his research skills are second to none among people I've run across. And increasingly, those skills are going to be valuable to the planning commission if it does what it's supposed to do in the future. That's my thoughts.
I'd like to add that I'm actually taking some of Brian's advice when he talked about interviews and how important they were for making decisions and I do have given it a lot of thought. And I have to say, I was impressed with, with Joe's interview. I really was. And it was a big part of my decision.
Well, can you address his, uh, online postings? Cause.
Yeah, most of his online postings are not fact, fact, there, there's a lot of fiction in there. There's not a lot of truth.
I disagree with you.
He just did it this weekend.
I, I disagree.
He just did it this weekend with two articles.
There, there's, there's one that I would like to bring up. Um, Ms. Krepis was denied the seat because of things she said about city council, apparently. Um, Mr. Ryder made a post accusing the city administrator and the city attorney ghostwriting newspaper articles for the local newspaper. So one resident did email the writer and the writer said, no, the city administrator, the city attorney is not writing my articles. I'll ask the city attorney, did you ghostwrite any articles?
Wasn't talking about Eric. They, they, uh, to Chris, didn't it? Chris Nelson?
No.
It wasn't Eric. It was Chris Nelson or it was Kevin. It was after him. Remember, we had Chris Nelson, then we had Kevin, and then we had Eric.
But, but one, I'll, I'll address your question. I get your question and we're, we're not, we're not, uh, we're not appointing Joe to the planning commission because he's the second coming of Christ or a perfect person or something. I didn't see that. I didn't see that. Uh, just that he's capable and he has a, a significant interest in working in this field and we think he should be given an opportunity to do so. Does he, I've talked to him about, he goes over the top a little bit sometimes. As one of those people who occasionally is accused of doing the same thing, I can relate, but, uh, that doesn't take away from a person's other qualities. Well, apparently did for Ms. Krepis.
Well, no, that was, that was, uh, I can't believe we're six months later, five months later, we're still rehashing this thing.
But you keep bringing up sewer and water. That was twelve years ago. Anyways.
Well, yeah, but we're still paying that. We're paying over a million dollars on that.
Mr. Ryder accused the city attorney and the city administrator.
You're jumping around now. You brought up Karen. That was, I've stated before.
I'm saying this is the same thing.
We didn't want to invite conflict into this situation.
So Mr. Ryder apparently was not true when he accused the city administrator.
So says the writer of the article. Do you ever, ever have questions about, I don't know, articles you read in newspapers? That whether they're true or not?
But I don't go online. I don't go online and accuse anybody of ghostwriting anything.
Well, he got a reaction out of him. Maybe that's what he was going for. He was, he was not as a planning commissioner or anything. He was as a guy on Facebook. I see a lot of stuff. I mean, you want to, you want to talk about accusations being made? I think I, I can attest to the fact that it's unpleasant, but it comes with the job. You know, grow up, deal with it, you know. You don't see me getting on there and having a fit over people.
Yeah, neither do I.
You know, let it go.
But this is, this is something that he lied about the city. He lied about city employees.
He exaggerated.
No.
Oh, you're, you're saying it's a lie because the guy who wrote the article says, no, I didn't talk to Jack or I didn't talk to the Chris or whoever.
Jack, did you write any of the articles?
No.
Well, we can get in touch with the previous city attorney. I'm sure they would deny it as well.
They did talk to the writer. We have evidence of that.
Well, there's talking and there's ghostwriting. Ghostwriting said that they wrote the articles.
Maybe the term was incorrect then.
I, I don't think so.
Maybe collaborative would have been a better term.
No, that's not, that's not the intent of that.
But either way, either way, uh, Joe Ryder is going to be appointed and if it turns out to be some kind of debacle, well, he can be removed.
So in the, uh, interests of transparency, uh, I know you've talked about nepotism and cronyism. Did Joe Ryder work in your campaign?
He provided, uh, Facebook consulting because none of us were glib with Facebook. I'd never been on Facebook in my life. Never wanted to be.
So, so he worked on your campaign?
He cons- consulted on Facebook.
Uh, he made a post on Facebook.
He didn't, he didn't design the campaign.
He made, he made a post on Facebook saying, I literally worked on their campaign.
Brian, maybe you spend your whole life on Facebook.
I don't.
You, you want to drag this off the topic. The point is he's being appointed.
I'm asking, I'm asking.
Whether you like it or not, he's going to be appointed to the planning commission.
Well, I'm asking because you don't like nepotism. You've stated, you've stated you don't like nepotism. Right? Is that correct? Nepotism, cronyism, is that correct?
Enough of you. I've, I've had it with your crap. I really.
Mayor, uh, council members, I do recall that, um, there's been some sessions where you've wanted to have clear minutes. In order to have clear minutes, you need to make sure that you don't talk over each other. And while I have the floor, uh, since the question was posed to me, uh, I just want to make sure that is clear for the record that, uh, I have not ghostwritten for anyone, at least during my tenure, uh, with, uh, this body, which has been two and a half months. Um, I think this is also a good opportunity for me just kind of interrupt and then bring back to the floor, um, to this council. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
With that, we'll make.
I was just making the point that so far, the only people that have been appointed was Mr. Oracle, who was your running mate, and now Joe Reader, who worked in your campaign.
What a shock that people would want to work with people who agree with them. What a bizarre thing.
And that, that doesn't fit. And that doesn't fit the definition, definition of nepotism or cronyism.
You're a, you're a silly.
Yes or no? Yes or no? Does it fit the definition or not?
I don't know what's going on in that head of yours. I don't know what.
That, he asked, or no question?
I call a question. Let's vote.
To the motion to nominate Joe Reader for the planning commission, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes. Seven point oh, new business variance request, one nine four one, East Front Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again, and members of the commission. Let me get, uh, this up for you. On May sixteenth of twenty twenty-two, the city of East Bethel, prior to my employment with the city, received an application from the owner of the property at one nine one four one, East Front Boulevard Northeast, to allow the upgrade of an existing outhouse to a type three subsu- subsurface sewage treatment system. It's a mouthful. To make a cabin a future habitable residence. Due to the size of this point one seven acre lot, the proposed system design included the placement of a box mound which encroached on property lines and required the city permission or a variance for its use. City staff subsequently approved the permit and the system was installed in July of twenty twenty-two. During a final inspection, it was noted by the inspector that the installed septic box mound was constructed within the required setbacks and that a variance for a reduction of the side and front yard setbacks should have been sought and approved prior to its installation. Uh, as the new city planner, in the end of July, at my request, the applicant applied for a variance after the fact for the setback encroachments. City staff began to gather information in preparation for the variance public hearing. Inconsistencies were discovered in the existing survey from two thousand and four, which was on file, and the drawing submitted with the septic system permit application and what was actually built. A site visit was conducted for the purposes of confirming measurements and city staff concluded that the site didn't match either the two thousand and four survey or the drawing submitted by the septic, uh, designer and applicant. City staff contacted the applicant and requested a new certificate of survey be completed. That's attachment four in your packet. The new survey identified that the septic box mound was not only encroaching on the front and side yard setbacks, but a portion of it was also constructed in the city right of way. City staff consulted with the then city attorney, Chris Nelson, to determine the best course of action to address the circumstances. It was recommended, the recommendation of the city attorney that in addition to requesting variance approval, that a license and use agreement would be, need to be drafted to authorize the use of the portion of East Front Boulevard city right of way. Uh, the applicant is requesting a variance to reduce the south side yard setback standard from ten feet to zero to three feet, the north side yard setback from ten feet to six to seven feet, and the western front property line setback from ten feet to minus half a foot to one point seven feet for the placement of the septic box mound. The system meets setback requirements for neighboring wells. Consideration of a variance requires a three factor test for practical difficulty. The first factor is a test of reasonableness, which means that the landowner would likely use the property in a practical way, but cannot do so under rules of the ordinance. In this case, septic systems are required for a home to be considered habitable. The approval of the variance would allow this property to be used for residential use. The second factor is a test of uniqueness. The issue for a, the variance is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. The uniqueness generally relates to the physical characteristics of a particular property. In this case, the property has limited space for a drain field due to lot sizes created by a nineteen twenties era plat. There is an eight foot change in elevation from the front lot line, the East Front Boulevard, to the ordinary high water level mark at the shoreline. Uh, Minnesota statute requires that a subsurface sewage treatment system constructed in the shoreline area must have at least three foot of vertical separation distance between the redox features or evidence of groundwater and wastewater saturated soils of the distribution medium. This property's redox feature was located at one point five feet or eighteen inches below the existing grade at its deepest location at East Front Boulevard. The current setback requirements for wells and structures, as well as the D and R lake shore regulations, also make it unique. The third factor is that the variance would not alter essential character of the neighborhood. This factor is used to consider whether the resulting structure or improvement would be out of scale, out of place, or otherwise inconsistent with surroundings. When applying this test to a setback reduction, the visual impact or use of a building or an improvement related to surrounding dwellings is the emphasis of this assessment. For example, when thinking about a variance for an encroachment into a setback, the focus is how the particular building will look closer to a lot line and if that fits the character of the neighborhood. The Coon Lake Residential District has had a significant number of variances issued due to smaller lot size and the age of the neighborhood. Zoning and setback changes haven't occurred since this neighborhood was originally platted in nineteen twenty-five, which has led to a variety of placements of structures, fences, and landscaping. As an example, a neighboring property at forty-six forty, East Front Boulevard, was granted a license in two thousand and twelve, which is attachment eight of your packet, to use a portion of Sylvan Street for placement of a septic tank, piping, and a new deep well in order to upgrade a failing septic system on the property due to limited lot size. And in two thousand and twelve, the setback requirements were narrower than today's current regulations. The planning commission, uh, was scheduled for a public hearing on April twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-three. City staff took numerous phone calls as a result of the public hearing notice publication and its distribution. There were various levels of support and opposition for the septic box. The planning commission held their public hearing for the variance request for the installation of the septic box mound within the side and front yard setbacks at one nine one four one, East Front Boulevard. The applicant spoke of the incompleteness of the project and their intent to continue to improve the property. Five residents signed up and spoke in opposition to the variance for a variety of reasons. The planning commission's recommendation by a five oh vote was that the city council deny the variance request. City staffs requesting that council make a determination on the variance request for the standard to allow the installation or, or allow the septic box mound to remain, uh, at the south side yard setback standard from ten feet to zero to three feet, the northern side yard setback from ten feet to six to seven feet, and the western front property line from ten feet to a half a foot to one point seven feet for placement of the septic box mound with the following conditions. Uh, as I mentioned, we do have a current certificate of survey, which indicates the location of the current septic system and a monitoring and mitigation plan has been submitted by the septic designer and would be approved. A denial and an approval, uh, resolution have been included in your packet. Uh, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that I can.
Is there a motion?
Well, so that we can start discussion, I'm, I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash nineteen denying the, uh, variance.
Second.
Motion made second discussion.
Has there been any, Steve Ross is probably the best person in the room to ask this of, oh, with your background. Has there been any progress on new solutions, new ways of approaching this that would make it better for all the people on Front Street?
I have not been involved with this at all.
Oh, okay.
Aaron, I guess I got, how, how did it get this far with, you know, putting that in there with no variances? I mean.
Mr. Mayor, I don't realistically know. I was not employed with the city in May when the application came in. Uh, I was a, uh, an intern in the end of June. By the end of July, I was made the city planner when the final inspection was done, uh, and here we are today. So I can't answer.
Well, Jack was here. What's your read on how this happened?
After this was approved, uh, and we didn't know anything about it until, we didn't know there was an issue until it started construction, uh.
How was it, how was it approved? What was, what happened?
We had an inspector go out and looked at. We had an inspector go out and looked at it and approved it, and there was a misinterpretation of him on the setbacks. He made an error, and it was approved, and that was in the lap of the city.
Was there a site plan review on this before you issued a permit?
There was an inspection done later by another member of the building department, and it was approved. I think they thought there was a variance that was issued, so there was apparently a miscommunication there, so that's where we wound up.
So was the certificate of survey, was that done after they had put it in?
Correct.
After?
After.
Should have been done before.
As I said, Mr. Smith, the, the survey that was on file, what was submitted by the septic designer, those numbers did not match up after I had a chance to review it. So then we requested a third certificate of survey to try and determine which one was right, which one was wrong, where the, where the error may have come up. So, there were some differences in measurements between all three of the surveys. I can only venture that today's surveys are done through GPS versus the old-fashioned transom and stick that were done probably even back in two thousand and four. So I think as we progress, we're going to see more accurate measurements than we've ever seen before with GPS options, so that's, that's my assumption as to the differences.
Have you heard anything about somebody moving a surveyor's stake as part of this whole process?
One of the public, one of the residents who spoke up at the public hearing made a, I don't know if accusation is the right word, or made reference to the septic installation company moving a stake. The pictures that I have, if I can show you, this is what the, this is what the property looked like prior to the current owners purchasing the property. And this is the current situation that we're looking at. If you can see, there's a red stake, a pink flag, sorry, on a stake here, and there's one on this corner right here. My assumption is that the property pin is right at that corner, and likely would have possibly had to have been moved in order for the box to be right on the property corner. I wasn't there when it happened. You can see in this illustration as well, or this picture that I took, it's right on the corner.
Do you have any sense of how this is going to turn out? Either of you gentlemen, just based on your experience? It's an unfortunate situation.
It sure is. What I know, Mr. Lewis, is that...
Kevin's fine.
Kevin? Okay. This septic box design was submitted by the designer because a traditional mound system would not work. The location where the deepest soils, the one-point-five foot of, or eighteen inches of soil, was found at the top of the hill up here. So that, that's realistically the prime location to install something. So a variance would be needed for that. Alternatively, there are other potentials, much more costly, which include holding tanks. Holding tanks also require a variance because they're not a type-two system. That's, that's acceptable by the MPCA. So we would, we would be back here for another variance hearing should this box mound be removed and we have to move to it, or the applicants have to move to a tank system. I, I do have some information on costs associated with pumping tanks and those kind of things, so there are some additional costs beyond what a mound or a box mound would provide the homeowners. There's going to be additional pumping requirements, maybe from every couple of years to maybe every three weeks, depending on use, based on the size. I do, I did take a drive through the neighborhood and took some images of some other structures and/or vegetation that are located in the right-of-way, if you will, along East Front as maybe potential options to camouflage...
A whole lot of ground cover is what you're thinking of.
That's kind of my, my proposal. As you can see, these hedges were in spring. They haven't quite flowered or bloomed yet, but I think that that would provide some nice coverage, potentially. Here's an arborvitae hedge just around the corner. Here's a retaining wall. Here's a fence at the property line with a chain link at the other side. And you can see some items here that are definitely within the right-of-way of the city. Here's some landscaping that's also on the same street. There are some new evergreens planted here. I'm assuming they're right at the property line. Here's some more vegetation within the thirty-three feet of the right-of-way. Here's another set of bushes. A fence, another fence, another line of bushes. And then I just, for visual purposes, pasted in a white picket fence that, that's four feet high. That would be allowable by city code in front of the septic box as a potential screening option to the applicants should this variance be approved. Again, I point out that that's the, an option. Vegetation is also an option. But again, I just wanted to point out that... Let me get to the right slide here.
Put up a, a photo of a lake.
Yeah, right. This, this was the view prior to the installation and likely the view prior to...
Is, is it, Steve, you live on the road. Again, for the record here, I'm speaking to former mayor Steve Voss. And you live on the road, have for a long time. You know the neighbors involved. What do you see as a resolution for this that's going to make everybody happy? Is it just the people who bought it are out of luck, or what?
If you repeat this, the one issue hasn't discussed is the fact that that septic eliminated the ability to have a driveway from that property. There's no...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're on the city easement. They're driving in on the city easement, aren't they?
It's not a city easement.
Well, that's what they're...
So...
Okay. Yeah, you're right. I forgot about that.
There's no driveway to East Front Boulevard. They, they, this eliminated it.
And, and don't they have on the beach, Jack, you can probably, there's a lot of holding tanks with properties there on the small ones, right? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, there, there's several holding tanks.
Just have the holding tanks.
On Front Street, right?
I don't know about Front Street.
I don't know about Front Street. There, there's probably more over in the Coon Lake Beach area. But, you know, holding tanks are used where you can't get a septic system in because of either setbacks, soil depths, or other constraints on that type of system for their placement on these little, small, tiny lots.
You know, it just sounds like one of those situations. It's just a damn shame. That's about it. So I don't, I can't imagine how they're all going, everybody's going to be satisfied. Can't imagine. Glad I'm not in the middle of it. And ironically, LaCienzki is coming over to pump our septic tank tomorrow. Tell him to keep the backhoe out of there.
So if I've got this correct, the motion was to deny?
Yeah.
Okay, for the, on the motion to deny the variance, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a second?
Yes.
There was a second.
Tim, second. Opposed? That motion passes.
That's a tough one.
Number two, ordinance amendments.
Will you give me one second here?
Yes, sir.
Page ninety-two. Okay, on April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, the planning commission held a public hearing and reviewed proposed amendments to the zoning code at the request of the East Bethel City Council. The planning commission discussed suggested amendments and had the following recommendations. Let me see if I can bring up. Article five, section seventy-four.
Article four.
Excuse me, article four. Section seventy-four dash ninety-five. There was a proposed amendment to the septic identification or septic identification and upgrade of substandard sewage treatment facilities or facility. The planning commission discussed the proposal of the city council, and the recommendation was only to alter suggestion subsection C. And I have provided that recommendation in a redline format in the staff report. The conversation surrounding the subsection C basically revolved around the proposed language that if a property owner, the concern was that this would dissuade owners from applying for any building permits under the premise that the property owners will risk not applying for a permit because of the word "if" is suggestive. Therefore, the recommendation was to strike "if" a property owner and replace it with when a building permit or variance is applied for, that affects the capacity of a subsurface treatment system, it must be evaluated. If the system is substandard, it must be upgraded before the permit or variance is issued. That was the only suggested change to the proposed amendment to that article four, section seventy-four dash ninety-five. I don't know if you guys want to take these one at a time, or if you want me to go through them all and...
Address that one.
Okay.
Since I brought that up. I like the wording that they did put in there versus if a property owner, because when a building permit is pulled, so it's kind of general, even for contractors and everything else, so that is good. So if we add this tonight, we can get this approved tonight as well, right?
You can, you can, yep, there was a public hearing held, and then their amendment recommendations to you. So you can make the, the motion to approve, or based on the recommendation and the completion of the public hearing.
Okay. I'll make a motion for article four, section seventy-four dash ninety-five for approve.
Motion made, second discussion.
Just for clarification, that's with the recommendation of the planning commission change?
With the win, yep.
Is that a motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one passes.
All right, the draft, the next one was section article four, section fourteen, subsection five on detached accessory structures. After discussion of the proposed amendment, the removal of section five A was agreeable to the members of the planning commission. We're just striking out the temporary storage for an agricultural zone. They agreed that that change was acceptable.
A move that we approve article four zoning, section fourteen, sub-five.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. Motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
All right, in regards to the last two proposed amendments to the zoning code, the planning commission had reached nearly the four-hour time window, and there was a lot of ongoing back-and-forth conversation regarding these two proposals. I could not get a read on any one of the planning commission members to determine if any of them were even making a recommendation at that point. There was a lot of...
Yawning.
Yes. And so, without any formal recommendation, my request would be that we kick these two back to the planning commission for the May meeting for further discussion and a formal recommendation on the proposed changes when they have a fresh mind and haven't sat here for four hours.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we send the proposed changes to section seventy-four dash ninety-five and zoning section fourteen, sub-five back to the planning commission for further consideration.
I think we just approved those two. You want to kick section twenty-four and twenty-four back?
Like I said, I wanted to...
You want to kick them all back?
No, no.
Okay.
No, I'm reading the wrong place. Excuse me. Zoning section twenty-four, exterior storage, light industrial, B-two and B-three districts. Okay, and also article four, zoning section twenty-eight dash architectural standards. Send both of those back to the planning commission for further consideration.
Very good.
Your motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion.
Tim? I couldn't get here in time. Can I speak?
Sure, if you want to come up.
You all know I'm Brian Bezanson, East Bethel EDA. This has an impact on economic development also. I would, I'm gonna, I have not had an opportunity to contact any other EDA members. I see that Suzanne is back there. I think the EDA should look at it also, because I can't think of anything, as someone who is a building professional, who has built millions of dollars of commercial buildings, that's more important than what your architectural standards are in this, in that zoning district. So, I'm going to ask the EDA to take a look at this also. Just letting you know.
Well, is it possible for you guys to look at them, those of you like yourself with experience and interest in doing so, and then consulting the planning commission? As opposed to having a whole separate session, because you guys only meet once a month?
I don't, I, I guess, let me...
I'm just thinking of expediting.
We have a meeting a week from tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of expediting.
I look at how long it takes to pull a commercial building permit, and I don't believe that we have anything that I have heard of that would be impacted from this by a, you know, to me, this is a lowering of standards. So I think, yeah, I, I think we could work on it together.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that. The more advice we can get on it, the better, especially from people with knowledge of it. I'm all for that.
Okay.
Yeah, we take, we take your point.
I've got thirty years in commercial construction.
Well, that ought to do it.
From swinging a hammer to reviewing bids. Thank you.
Yeah, I think you have useful input.
Do you want to amend that to include the EDA?
To, and, and, to include the EDA input from members of the Economic Development Authority as...
And the planning commission?
Yeah, to, to the planning commission.
I have to ask the other members of the planning commission. You know, whether, you know, I suppose I could, you know, we could run it up on a telephone, or run it up on a on a telephone call, see if we want to add some stuff, add it to this coming Tuesday's meeting.
You mean, talk to other members of the EDA about including us? Yeah, I would think that would be the way to go. Yeah.
Our planning commission doesn't meet until the last Tuesday of the month.
Right.
The EDA meets before that, so we could take any formal recommendation from the EDA to the planning commission meeting at the end of the month.
Yeah.
And we, we can just set that as an agenda item on the EDA. We don't need to make any notification.
I'm sorry, Jack.
We, we can set that as an EDA agenda item, and, you know, if it gets there and they don't want to discuss it, they can pull it and reset it for another date. But it, but it would help expedite, I think, if we moved it along as quickly as possible.
So do we even need to mention it in my motion?
No.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Brian.
You want to, you want to send out an email to the...
Well, when I send the agenda out, this will be an agenda item.
Yeah.
So we don't, unless somebody has something they want to add, we do the agenda, then if it's not favorable to the EDA, they can just pull it and say, you know, we're not going to discuss this tonight. We, we'll give... We, we, we'll give my heads up.
Okay.
Thank you.
To the, to the motion that Kevin made, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes.
Thank you, Brian.
Department reports, twenty twenty-four Parks Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Parks Commission prepares an annual capital improvement plan which updates needs and costs for proposed projects, evaluates priorities, and establishes funding for those works for the coming year and for each of the subsequent years for a five-year period. This plan is presented to city council for their approval and used in the preparation of the twenty twenty-four budget. This plan was reviewed by city council at the work meeting on May first. Attached in your packet again is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight Parks Capital Improvement Plan developed from discussions at the March thirteenth and April eleventh Park Commission meetings and the May first, two thousand and twenty-three city council work meeting. Approval of the plan only commits the city for projects identified for twenty twenty-four. Projects beyond twenty twenty-four are for planning purposes and will be reevaluated annually for funding prioritization during capital improvement needs and assessment in the planning process. The budget includes a proposed general fund transfer of one hundred thousand dollars for Parks capital projects for twenty twenty-four. This is subject to city council approval. Is anticipated the Parks dedication fee from developers will provide an additional forty thousand dollars to the Parks acquisition, acquisition and development fund for twenty twenty-four. The Parks Commission voted unanimously to recommend the attached twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight Parks Capital Improvement Plan for approval by city council.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we accept this.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Twenty twenty-four Roads Capital Improvement Plan.
Staff prepares an annual capital improvement plan which updates the needs and costs of proposed projects, evaluates priorities, and establishes funding for those works for the coming year for streets and roads and for each of the subsequent years for a five-year period. This plan is presented to city council for their approval and used in the preparation of the twenty twenty-four budgets. Attached in your packet is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight Roads Capital Improvement Plan. Approval of the plan only commits the city for projects identified for twenty twenty-four. Projects beyond this date are for planning purposes and will be reevaluated annually for funding prioritization during the capital improvements, needs assessment and planning process. This item was also discussed at the city council work meeting on May first. The budget includes a proposed general fund transfer increase of fifty thousand dollars for road improvement projects for twenty twenty-four subject to city council approval. Staff recommends the attached twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight Roads Capital Improvement Plan to city council for their consideration and approval.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the Roads Capital Improvement Plan, twenty twenty-four, twenty-eight Roads Capital Improvement Plan.
Second, Dan.
Motion made, second discussion. Is it a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. G one, the opioid settlement.
City's participation in the National Opioid Settlement was reviewed at our April third, two thousand and twenty-three work meeting. This discussion was prompted by the League of Minnesota Cities as part of their follow-up to urge cities to sign on to the settlement agreement. The city contacted the League of Minnesota Cities requesting background information on this matter to support the presentation to city council. The comments submitted by the Minnesota, Minnesota Attorney General's Office to bring this matter to city council were insufficient at that time to justify the request as an agenda item. This response was related to city council by email on April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Rhonda Silveraja, Anoka County Administrator, contacted the city on May third, two thousand and twenty-three and requested that East Bethel consider signing the National Opioid Settlement Participation Agreement to ensure maximum funding for the county allocation for this program. Even though East Bethel would not receive money from the settlements, we are being encouraged to approve and sign the agreements to maximize the county share of the funds. If all cities over a population of ten thousand sign on to the settlements or release their claims against the particular five parties identified in this settlement, it increases the total pool of money that these parties must pay to the state of Minnesota. Funds allocated to state are then distributed to the county. This money would then be used for county public health programs, embedded social workers and city police department, the lock zone purchases and many other efforts to remediate the effects of the opioid epidemic. The city of East Bethel has no mechanisms in place, experience or means to implement any use of these funds from the settlement would, but would benefit from having these programs available for our residents. We've been informed that we would bear no expense for endorsing the program or allocating our share of these funds to the county. Is intended that this round of settlements is the last time city councils will have to approve a memorandum of agreement. While in approval of this new memorandum of agreement, city councils have the ability simply to authorize staff to join or not join opioid settlements as they appear, subject to all terms of the agreement. The deadline for signing has been extended to May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three to accommodate the county request and have all our cities as a signatory to the settlement agreement. City attorney has stated he sees no reason why the city can't or should not sign these documents. State of Minnesota is projected to receive two hundred and forty-five million dollars from the settlement and I'll bet amount, Anoka County will receive approximately eight point five million. East Bethel again would not receive any direct allocations, but by signing, they would potentially become eligible to apply for state grants or county grants if the county decides to go in that direction in the future. But more importantly, it can increase additional funds the county can use to provide locally available services and resources for those in need of treatment. There's two recommendations to this report. Staff recommends that city council consider the approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five, resolution authorizing the city of East Bethel to execute all necessary documents to ensure the city of East Bethel participation in the multi-state settlements relating to the opioid supply chain participants and in Minnesota opioid state subdivision memorandum of agreement as exhibited in attachment one in your package.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve recommendation will be number one. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five, resolution authorizing the city of East Bethel to execute all necessary documents to ensure East Bethel participation in multi-state settlement relating to opioid supply.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion.
Uh, Jack, will we also see recommendation number two approved?
Uh, we'll do that separately. We'll do this one first and then we'll do that separately.
Okay.
Okay, to recommend, recommendation number one, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Recommendation, recommendation number two.
Staff recommends that city council consider approval of the amended Minnesota opioid state subdivision memorandum of agreement as exhibited in attachment two in your package.
Make a motion to approve amended Minnesota opioids state subdivision memorandum, memorandum of agreement as seen in attachment two.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion.
Well, I'm glad, even though East Bethel cannot administer this program themselves, that we can do some small part in helping out some people in the area. So I'm glad that we can take advantage of this so that some citizens may get help that they need.
And again, this is something we have needed, like I said, the mechanisms, the resources, the ability to administer any of it. This would be better allocated to the county to take advantage of economies of scale and their existing systems put in place to make sure this happens.
Well, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Staff report, Jack.
The only thing that I have to add is that there is another local government association meeting on May thirty-first at the Bunker Hills Activity Center at six P M. This is a gathering of all the mayors, city council members that wish to attend and certain city staff and county organizations like the highway department and other groups within the county that can join together. They have a meal and a program presentation and a chance to talk to some of your fellow city members in the county. So if anybody would like to attend, let me know and I'll get you signed up.
Done.
That's it.
Brian?
Uh, the only thing is that the mayor and I attended the highway cleanup. We volunteered with the East Bethel Fire Department Auxiliary to do roadside cleanup from Cooper's Corner down to two twenty-first. We ended up filling two large pickup trucks, beds full of garbage and bags and, oh, it's an incredible amount. Just that, I'm sure that there's stuff missed and just makes you think how much litter is actually out there in our roadways. So I really want to thank the Fire Department Auxiliary for putting it together and, and doing it and giving us the opportunity to volunteer with them. That's all I have.
So you actually helped, you and the mayor?
Yeah.
We were on both sides.
Thank you.
Three hours. Kevin, you have anything?
Uh, just, we're supposed to have that special Planning Commission meeting last night, tomorrow, tomorrow night. Please let me know as soon as you know, because I have some things I could do if I'm not going to be there. And also, if we are there, like I spoke to Jack earlier today, then we'd like to have, if you have a quorum of the Planning Commission, then we might as well approve, accept, swear in, whatever, Joe Ryder tomorrow night. And the other thing is, I mentioned last time we were together, the verification of residency per the changes in the ordinances on commissions, authorities, whatever. And I handed, tendered my, a copy of my driver's license. I'd like to see that process continue so that we do see that, you know, just to make sure that everybody is, there you go. Just make sure that everybody who's on the city council or on commissions or authorities or actual residents of the city. I thought that was an important addition to our municipal code was to actually have a definition of what a resident is. It's kind of fundamental, but. Any reaction, staff?
My only.
You're all excited to make sure that happened.
I mean, my only reaction, and Mr. Larson can confirm this, that a, an ordinance change only then goes into effect ten days after it's changed and you can't necessarily obligate anyone who may have had an existing situation prior to the ordinance change comply. Sort of non-conforming.
What, are you saying you discussed this with him?
I know, I'm asking him if he wants to clarify that.
Oh.
If an ordinance was passed, do, can we make people prior to that?
Is it retroactive?
Right, that's what I'm trying to say.
Mayor, council members, your interim development director has been accurate on all points tonight, including this last one. If people want to voluntarily, of course, submit to the city city administrator and staff proof of residency showing that they meet that code resident requirement, you know, before the fact, they certainly can. But it takes effect for essentially those individuals post-effective date. While I have the floor, I just wanted to point out on the opioid, opioid settlement funds and so forth, I'm pleased with this vote because one of the things that it does, and I did review the settlement documents because this would be something that the city has to sign. So I want to make sure that the city is not unduly, you know, harming itself by some type of contractual obligation. So it did take a little time because sometimes these things can be hidden. I didn't find anything. I, and therefore, city administrator Davis was correct. I did not see any reason for the city not to enter into it. But I want to underscore that part of the requirements is, is that each county must consult annually with the municipalities in the county regarding future use of the settlement funds in the county. So this vote has given you at least that persuasive seat at the table.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Actually, at our council meeting, April twenty-fourth, twenty-three, we agreed to extend the, a one-year extension for the Brock Verisbas mechanic, which is good. And during that meeting that we had there, I was kind of surprised that he wasn't there. And I thought, you know, if that was my business and they were going to approve it or not approve it, I would have definitely wanted to be there to speak on it. So that curiosity got me, so I went and seen him. I met him on Saturday on the twenty-ninth and I met him and his wife. And I talked to both of them and they have a, they're great people and have a good operation. Everything is clean, everything is in order. And so I, I talked to him and I asked him why he wasn't at the meeting. And he told me, he said that he had a conversation with Jack and you were supposed to get ahold of him and let him know. And he said he never heard a word back from you.
Well, I thought we had notified him the date previously.
He said he never heard a word from you. To me, that's important, especially on something like this, because I mean, if we would have denied that, he would have been kicked out of there. And that's not right. We got to really follow up on stuff like that for sure. I mean, he said that he never heard a word from you. So I'm just pointing that out to you.
Thank you.
And then, also, I got a question. Like when we get our packets and stuff like that and everything's C C'd, why is that reporter guy, Ian whatever, why is he getting our packets?
Well, he sent that to them, they requested a copy of it.
I don't agree with that. I think if they want a copy, they can find it theirself. I don't think we should be supplying it for them. Because what I've seen on their newspaper is one-sided when it comes to the council and stuff like that and comments, and they don't really care. So my thought is, we shouldn't be sending that to them. So we need a motion to stop that, or can you just stop it?
That's a direct request.
How is your feelings? You think we should be letting the newspaper, giving them copies of our packets?
Doesn't matter if he gets a packet. I know he watches it on T V, so it doesn't matter either way.
I don't think we should supply it.
Doesn't matter then.
And.
Well, if we don't supply him, we might as well not supply anybody else.
And, and they could just sign up.
That's not the point.
They could just sign up for the email blast.
That's fine, let him do it.
Every resident gets one anyway, so what's the difference?
Let him do it. We had to do it.
I have a real fundamental view of such things. Things that are going to happen are going to happen though, one way or another. And it's kind of like why I don't respond to all the crap, frankly, on Facebook. And I don't bother thinking about it much. It just comes with the job. And I do have a strong belief that in the end, truth usually wins out. You know, so, but that's just my view.
That's fine.
And it is posted to the website on Friday and accessible to the public at that point, so I, you can't really control.
Like I said, the guy doesn't do his homework anyways. Let him do his homework and get it himself. That's my opinion. So whether it is or not, how are we going to do it?
Sure.
And then last I got, does it cost the residents money? When, what I noticed with a lot of responses with our emails and stuff, they go to the city attorney. Does the city attorney, every time he opens an email, does it cost the residents?
City attorney charges us for his services. I don't know what you're talking about, about emails go to the city attorney.
When emails go, if you look at your C Cs, a lot of them are going to the, to the attorney. Is it necessary that they all go to him?
We keep the city attorney in the loop. Those aren't, if we want the city attorney to respond to anything, we ask him directly to address the matter.
But if it, if it's something that's not serious, is it necessary that we do that? Because it costs us money, I imagine, every time.
I'll, I'll let the city attorney answer that. I think it's just good to have him in the loop to make sure he knows what's going on. I think it makes his job easier.
So, mayor, council members, I try to make sure that the time that I bill to the city has value and there are times where the C C is such. and there are times where the C C is such where it's clear that it's just what I will call in legal terms a de minimis F Y I, kind of queuing things up when and if it is something that's going to deed my attention. So I think that is helpful for the city, but I do not bill. But I will tell you, there are other times where the C Cs are such that in, in my judgment as the city attorney, and my role is to look after all of the legal needs and provide counsel for and on behalf of the city where that seems appropriate. I will say that I would have to, of course, review my bills over the last two and a half months because I started in February that, but my recollection is, is that generally it's been because that C C has started a string of, of emails and therefore was not a one-off.
Okay, so if I'm understanding you right, then if it's something that you just look at and it doesn't really matter, you know what I mean, if it's something that's not critical, then you're not billing us for that?
I can give you an example, there was a, a series of emails today. And I, I was not, and I did not bill for that. I did bill, of course, to actually look at today's agenda.
Okay, no, that's fine, that's what I mean, I'm just looking out for the residents so we're not peeing anywhere we have to.
No, I appreciate that, and that's why I tried to, I tried to explain my, my process. So that way I was trying to be as broad and general, but also as specific and answerable as possible.
Great, thank you, Eric, appreciate that.
Thanks, Eric.
Eric?
That's all I got.
Tim?
Uh, we met with the Upper Rum River Watershed. They did their budget for the year and elected, elected officers. And it was a rather lengthy meeting, but we took care of that this week. And I guess the planning or the Parks Commission meeting is canceled for tomorrow. So we won't, we won't be going into that, but that's what I have.
Okay, thanks, and all I want to do is like Brian said, thank the auxiliary, there was a lot of stuff, we picked up a lot of stuff.
Yeah, somebody could have got a free bike all of it.
Yeah, somebody must have flipped a car or truck, we picked up more tools than you can imagine, so. But with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, second discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.
Any ten millimeter sockets?
What's that?
Any ten millimeter sockets?